At this time, anybody who wishes to address the board, they do so. Go from the meeting for comments from the public at this time, anybody who wishes to address the board, they do so. Nobody who pushes to address the board at this time, they'll have a chance at the end of the meeting and they'll get a chance to be in the meeting today. Minutes of the previous meetings, September 2nd, boards all have copies, is there any additions or additions? If not, I'm going to entertain the motion.
Make a motion to accept the means. Minutes of the previous meeting of September 2nd.
Seconds. Moved by trustee Bertsch, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your son of I.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, bills. You all have copies of the bills?
Yep.
And actually, do we have any additions or additions?
I have three additions. Um, the first one is FIA card services for seventy-nine thirty-seven. Um, staples for one twenty-four oh-five and Walmart for ten fifty-eight.
Make a motion to pay the bills tonight as amended?
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your son of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried, correspondence?
No correspondence.
We'll read it under your report, see if Mr. Bertsch don't have anything on there.
Well, we do have a letter from, uh, business in town addressed to the board, I think it should be read, and paying people concerning the new village parking lot, does want me to read it? As a business owner in Rosas Point and everyday user of the village parking lot off Washington Avenue, it would have been nice to have been notified of the tree project that you have going on. The survey would have been a good idea and these are a few of the concerns that I have. The decrease in accessibility, whose idea was it to dig up the whole end of the parking lot facing Lake Street? We walk through the lot two or four times a day and putting a wall and trees all the way across the front is a total lack of concern for the patrons of the parking lot. In the summertime, it is fine to use the park, the sidewalk, but when it is raining or in the winter, the sidewalk is not an option. This sidewalk is constantly flooded with water, the water runs down the sidewalk like a river. In the winter, the sidewalk is never plowed and when it is plowed, it is covered in several inches of ice. Thus, we are forced to walk down the road, that is a real safe option, isn't it? This wall that is being installed will also make the parking lot smaller. Has anyone discussed how he or she will plow the snow? How often will it be removed? I am sure, as past experiences have proven, that it will not be removed before eight AM when we arrive to work or when the apartment dwellers leave to go to work. Birds will now be nesting in the trees and thus crapping all over our cars. We will also have tree limbs and leaves falling over our vehicles. Who is going to cover the damage of that and pay for a paint job from bird crap? Creation of a wall to plant flowers in will also create a sitting place for kids to hang out on. This is a dark, unsupervised area as it is and I would not be happy going to my car in the dark and have people from the bar or kids hanging out on this wall. This creates a scary and unnecessary hangout and a potential hideout spot for vandals and criminals. Number five, if you want to plant trees on the back of the parking lot, fine, but planting a whole line of trees along the front of the parking lot is not in capital letters, logical. The village is showing a total lack of respect for the parking lot users. We have a two-hour parking limit on the street and we have encouraged us to use the parking lot. Now, you are cutting off access to the parking lot and you are forcing us to use a hazardous way to get to the parking lot and creating a hangout spot. Apartment dwellers as well as business owners have to carry items daily from their vehicles and increasing the distance is disrespectful of the village. I ask all the village board members to reconsider the placement of a barrier on the east side of the parking lot. This creates less space apart, possibly damage to our automobiles, a hangout for vandals, and most importantly, it leaves only one dangerous way for us to access to Lake Street. I would like to have all board members make the trek from the parking lot to Lake Street in the pouring down rain or in a windy winter day and you would know exactly what I'm talking about. How often have you seen people purposely walk up Washington Avenue as part of their walk on these days? Never would, never would be the answer because you need cleats on your shoes and waders up to your hips to get through. Please consider the planting of east side parking lot barricade in capital letters. Concerned business owner, thank you.
I didn't know there was going to be a wall.
Well, I, I don't know about anybody else, but I don't, I as a board member have never been approached or, and we've had many discussions with Melissa, the planning board, we had one of the trustees and the sidewalk review and Washington Avenue and the whole new parking lot and I've never heard anybody complain and I've been up there personally, I see three maple trees, small, nice maple trees that I have planted on the east side, three on the west side. There's four huge stadium, I would call them stadium lighting, lights out of there in the parking lot. I mean, I, I don't know how, um, or why, uh, this is a, a great concern. I think if anything, it's improving the lot that we used to have, making it much nicer and it's, it just makes the downtown more agreeable. I don't, I think if anything, it's an attraction. And, uh, I'm sorry that she feels that way, but I wish she would have come and at least talked to one of us before writing this up. That's my feeling.
I have to agree with you, John.
And we're all open, there's not anyone on this village board that has not been receptive to anything that anybody's ever said or commented and we have, uh, Elan Planning, who I think has done a wonderful job, uh, doing our landscaping and preparing our downtown and Melissa McManus has been working extremely hard to get this village looking, uh, fantastic and we've had comments from people all around the state when it comes to Rosas Point and the downtown looks beautiful and then it's just another enhancement and there's no wall that's going on, nobody ever, there's no plans of having a wall. Maybe if anything, uh, there's got to be a, maybe a six-inch barrier to keep the grass and the people from, from driving over. I don't think anything else, is there anything else planned here, Francis?
No, I don't.
No, the idea was like a railroad type.
Like a railroad type.
Just, just to mark the boundary.
That's what was there in the first place.
There'll be grass planted.
There'll be grass, beautiful.
And then, so you're increasing the green space and then maybe something like a railroad type here, just to, to mark the boundary.
Six inches, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Well, it's unfortunate she feels this way, maybe, uh, when she sees the final result, she'll change her mind.
Well, and I think too, the more attractive that we can make the parking lot, when someone is traveling through the downtown and they don't find a parking spot, you know, and they want to stop, the more attractive that we can make the parking lot, I think the more apt people are to stop and take advantages of the businesses in the downtown. I just think it's human nature. You see something that looks, with our parking signs that we'll be putting up, which are the decorative signs, I think it's more inviting to people to park in there and hopefully make better access of the downtown businesses.
I'm, I'm proud of the way the village looks. I don't think the villages ever look better. So, it's only going to get better as, you can see, uh, some of the other businesses are already painting their businesses and it's just catching on, so the village looks good, I'm, I'm proud of it. Any other comments? If not, we'll go on to the report of the mayor and board of trustees. Uh, first thing on my agenda is appointment to, an alternate to the zoning board of appeals. And, uh, the name Steve Pinto has been brought to my attention and I'll make that appointment. I need border food. Just in case. Carol's not here and, so, you want to put that for a motion? I'll put that in form of a motion, I'll second it. All right, moved and seconded, any discussion?
I actually have a question. I know Carol received from, I think it was Tom Renee earlier in the week, some information about town law that alternates could serve for zoning and planning?
We have not heard any more.
We haven't heard, okay, all right. Because I think if, if we are able to do that, it would be good to appoint any alternate so that they could serve on either one, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if we get that cleared up, uh, we may do that. We'll have to talk with both boards and see what they want to do. Any other discussion? If there are no other discussions, all those in favor, vote by your son of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Uh, next item is cell towers. Uh, I talked to the attorney, uh, he recommends that we go with, uh, number two. Uh, I did as he requested, I called, uh, Richmondville where these people had built a tower and, uh, he wanted to know just exactly what their income was and what they were and their income right now is two thousand seventy a month. Uh, the tower will be going very shortly to three thousand because they'll have three tenants on it a month. Uh, they did tell me one thing to make sure that our attorney, and I also told that to, Tom, is that if there are any reasons these decide to go default, in other words, if the companies decide to take their antennas down or whatever or pull out, that the, the, what is it, J?
JNS.
JNS will be responsible for taking the tower down, we don't need it.
I can't see, I would think that there would be more people coming into as we go. So, should I, should be more, you know, I would think more companies, once they see that we got the tower up here, they should add different companies, Unisell, Nextel.
Yeah, Horizon probably, I have to get on that.
Well, they might be a little upset, they might be a little upset if we go with the second company.
Have you, uh, discussed this with Verizon, what I've been thinking about?
No, I told Horizon that they had submitted a contract and that we would be making the decision shortly. And whatever way the board goes, it's up to our attorney, he's reading both contracts and I told him that. And, uh, he said, well, he said, you know, he said, I don't think it's right, we did most of the legwork, I said, I, hey, you know what's going on, I'm not doing anything behind your back.
Well, they, they did the legwork for their own purposes.
That's right.
So.
Yeah.
It's.
And there were some things in that contract that I had heartburn with, serious heartburn.
Well, and, and are they turning?
And they didn't want to budge on. One of them was, we must give them a right of way to put power in, I said, you don't need that, we supply power from the transformer to your building, to the meter box. Oh, no, that ain't the way Horizon works, I said, I don't care, that's what we do. And they still put it in the contract.
So, uh, if we had to have this tower built by JNS or do we have any, other than Horizon, do we have perspective?
They do the marketing, JNS, JNS.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion to allow JNS to build a cell tower in Rousas Point.
This won't be done until this contract, I'll just, give me a second.
Second.
All right, moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Bertsch, discussion. Uh, nothing, this contract will not be signed until Tom Renee and I and whoever else wants to be involved, they go through it and find detail so that we are not hurt.
Well, yeah, because in Tom's letter from last meeting, he still has some other questions that are there.
Well, one of the questions was the amount of money.
Yes, and one, but one of them is also for the term because, I mean, I still, I, I, I like what they had said in here and I think it's very good, it clarifies the need to upgrade the municipal communication services for fire, police, water department, highway department, and future municipal communication needs. I still am concerned about the hype, but if that's going to be with any tower, that's just something I have to get past on my own. But, I also wrote down when I read this, something that Tom had in his letter, which has to do with the term of the agreement.
Yeah.
And I think that something, he said he believed that it needed to be clarified and I would agree with him because thirty years is a significant amount of time to tie the village and future boards in the, you know, as we move forward in the future. And who knows where this JNS Enterprises is going to be twenty or twenty-five years down the road, so I think that's something we might want to have Tom take another look at as you're writing a contract.
Okay.
I'd rather do it for ten years or open it up for something.
Yeah, I don't know whether they're willing to negotiate on that or not.
I don't either.
I think his point was well taken though in Tom's letter, I, I think that is something we should clarify.
Well, I'm sure, what I will do is, uh, if, if this is approved, I will call that young lady, try to set a meeting up with her, Renee.
Yeah, so maybe we could, maybe we could amend the motion that will authorize Tom to write an agreement with them and then authorize you to sign it later on, could we do that?
Maybe, I'm not signing anything until it goes through Renee.
But the good thing, I think, which is an improvement over the offer with Verizon is that it, it specifically states that it is for the municipal communication needs and I know Brian, you spoke at length at that one meeting about especially the emergency responders and that sort of thing and I think that that is very important. I think it is also then not precedent setting where we are allowing a private business to erect a tower within the village limits because that's one of the things we've been dealing with in our codes review committee and I think the fact that we as a municipality see this as an important thing for our purposes and for services like fire, police, and, and some of our, um, utilities and so on, I think that that, that is very good because then it doesn't set a precedent that a private business is allowed to erect a tower because one has been put up before. So, I think that's a, to me, that's a huge improvement.
Well, why don't we make this, uh, motion to this effect, uh, that, uh, we enter into, I'm not entering into, I'm going to put that way.
Paragraph eleven, I like, we got to ensure the thing?
Uh, that's another good question.
That was, that was another question.
But it is our tower.
In his letter.
It is our tower.
Yeah, it's part of the municipal, uh.
Our, it's our tower. When the tower is built, it will be signed over to us.
Oh, all right. That was the other one I wanted to ask you, question developed earlier. It's a good thing we had Tom go through it because there's a few things that, you know, you always want to have a lawyer looking over it.
Well, and that was one of his questions as well, if you go to page two of his letter. He would, he would propose that the agreement include some additional specifics regarding the insurance that would have to be provided.
Okay.
So, that's a good point.
Yeah, I think if we only, don't we have to pay the insurance? I don't think that's, I don't think that's going to be a big deal, but.
Does that come under our regular?
That would come under our regular policy. Yeah, blanket coverage.
Probably, I'll have to check with, uh.
Well, it says that JNS at its own expense shall procure and maintain during, through the term of this agreement, a policy of professional liability insurance covering all aspects of the construction and operation of the tower. We need to get insurance for the hazard and cavity insurance for the full replacement cost of the tower, so.
I'd like to know what a tower like this is worth, I mean, it must be significant amount, we never did really do it in our life.
Can we give it to that?
And if they, oh, they dig it.
And we enter into negotiation with JNS, there, that's what I wanted to say.
Let me amend my motion and, uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, enter in a negotiation with JNS concerning developing a tower in the village of Rousas Point with the assessment, with the, uh, concurrence of our attorney.
One second.
Seconded by John, is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote by your son of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Um, third thing on my agenda, authorize the clerk to publish legal notice for public hearing of local law three, noise ordinance. Uh, since it's all set to go, we have to have a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to allow the clerk to publish a legal notice for local law number three, the noise ordinance in the village of Rousas Point.
Seconded.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker, any discussion? I think you all have copies of that. No discussion, all those in favor, vote by your son of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Uh, authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice for public hearing of local law four, regulations controlling the use of electric boilers and electric hot air furnaces.
We'll make a motion to authorize the clerk to publish legal notice for the public hearing for local law number four, regulations controlling the use of electric boilers and hot air furnaces.
Second. Moved by trustee Bertsch, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? There are no discussions, all those in favor, vote by your son of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried and just for your information, the property maintenance law is now in effect. You should have had copies in an envelope for your books. Today.
Okay. Why did I put my grass?
Your grass wasn't a problem.
No, it's probably there, John, it's probably. Uh, that is it for me, trustee Jefferson. Nothing on my agenda to make amendments. Thank you, trustee Jefferson, trustee Penfield.
Um, I have two items on the agenda. Uh, the first item I have is actually an authorization to travel for our court clerk, Marie Quain. Um, she'll be leaving Rousas Point, destination Plattsburgh on October twenty-ninth from five PM until nine thirty PM and the purpose is a teleconference on restitution, fines, and surcharges. So, she's simply asking for mileage and I would make a motion that we, um, approve Marie Quain's authorization to travel for October twenty-ninth.
Second. Can anybody answer me the question of why she won't use the village car?
We got to use it next time anyway, so, for no reason.
I don't know.
I don't know who you asked her.
Well, you know what it is, I think she heard her husband's phone call to me.
So what? I mean, if the car is available, why doesn't she use it?
I'll ask her next time you see her.
I will.
Okay. I don't think that's, trustee Penfield, do you have a response to that?
No, in fact, I, I, I received this this afternoon in my mailbox, but I really don't have a problem honestly paying for mileage to Plattsburgh back for the teleconference. So, if, if the car's available and she's willing to use it, then that's fine. If their situation does not permit that, then.
Well, I don't have a problem with, yeah, if, if the car is not available.
Honestly, I didn't, I, I mean, I did not realize that she never may use the village car and, um, I just feel that, you know, her training is very important and either way is fine with me, with that, the village car or not.
She may not even, she uses village vehicles, she may never go over thirty miles an hour, so.
You're bad, John. Sure, you're wobbly tonight. Uh, was that motion passed?
We didn't vote yet, I don't think.
Do we have a second?
I think Brian did.
Brian seconded. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any other discussion?
Well, I think if you want to check with her regarding the village car, it's fine.
I want to.
I'm fine either way, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, vote for carry.
Okay, we're still kicking around, the schedule of fees for zoning and planning. Has anyone had a chance to review these and come up with any suggestions?
I looked at what has been proposed and I don't have a heartburn with it. We looked at it a couple of times.
I would make a suggestion as well, I, I don't have a problem with it either, I know I'm Jerry, I helped Jerry Farrow when she and I sat down and went through the entire list of fees. I would make a suggestion that we make this part of our review process in April at our organizational meeting. Seeing as they, they can be set by resolution of the board, they're not a local law or anything like that, it might not be a bad idea, even if we did it every other year, to take a look at them more frequently as part of our organizational meeting and then it's something that we know would, would have been updated if need be. Um, that would be my suggestion, I don't know if anyone has any others.
Uh, one question I had, we discussed it in the board office, I don't know if it's your, is the attorney's fees charged to the business on this, on this schedule review? In other words, if there are multiple, uh, reviews of the person has to pack before the building or the board, or the ones, is there a fee charged?
There is not, not on here, and, but not that there couldn't be.
No, I don't think there should be.
So.
That's a constant, with the, the attorney, is there regardless?
Yeah.
I don't think, the large residents should be charged any fees regarding, you know, the, the.
They'll have enough fees to pay as a head.
Yeah.
Is there, yes, it's true, but is, any, any suggested changes or?
I don't, I like the old version.
I did too.
So, what I would do then, I guess, go from here is, is give these to Carol and have a resolution set up that fits in with the other one. What is there though, is what, there's the paragraph on the bottom of the resolution that's not included because these produce the updates of fees, but that if the village needs to hire above and beyond what would be the normal cost of doing business, let's suppose that we have to incur an engineering cost for a particular application, remember the paragraph that was on the bottom of that? That that is then, the applicant is informed of the additional cost, but that is then passed along to them. So, if there's something that goes along with a specific application that is out of the norm.
Out of the norm.
That.
That probably doesn't happen.
I don't think it happens very often, but, you know, if we, if we ever needed to hire, let's say, dump drivers to do something that we, that would then be charged back to the applicant, so.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, it sounds right.
All right, you don't need to, no motion needed?
No, what I'll do is I'll pass these along to Carol and have her fit in, fit them into the resolution and then maybe have it for the next meeting.
Very good.
Okay. Okay. That's it for me.
Thank you, trustee Penfield, trustee Bertsch.
I have nothing this evening, your honor.
Thank you, trustee Bertsch, trustee Baker.
Nothing.
How about a report on the water tank?
Uh, let's go. They were supposed to, hopefully, well, it's been raining, so I don't think they've had a chance to finish sandblasting it inside, if they did, they'll be starting to prime it.
They were having, they're setting up their paint today.
Were they? Yeah, they're going to be painting shortly.
So, you asked, the mayor asked you a question, you knew the answer.
Well, it's just committed. He was testing me.
It's just committed.
It was a, it was a test, did you have a bag over your fire hydrant and what are you testing them on?
I do this morning.
Okay.
And, uh, mayor, to make it clear to everyone in the village, why do we have the, uh, bags on the fire hydrant?
Oh, my, my, yes, to, to answer that question, uh, when the, the water tank is empty and we're running on pumps, if you were to open a fire hydrant, you would shut down our pumps and then you would have a boil water order for the whole village. So, the, the, in the olden days when we had the old fifty horsepower pumps, the pumps that ran continuously, uh, regardless of how much water you used, it wasn't a problem, but with the pump, pump situation we have today, any quick decrease in pressure like that, so that the pump goes automatically, speeds up, can't catch up and we'll shut down. So, that's the reason why.
And if we had a major fire, we'd go right to the lake and draw right out of the lake.
The, the fire department was notified and, and plenty of time, uh, they've set up contingency plans already, they're all set up, so there's no problem there. I have a heartburn with people calling the press without calling the village office first. They would have had an explanation right up in the village office and the next thing you know, here we got Channel Five here, the only good thing was I was out of town.
It's also unfortunate, I think, that Channel Five didn't make a phone call to the village office as well.
Well, apparently they called and then they had to come up and do their thing, according to Carol. Uh, I was down with my sons when I got the phone call that Channel Five was coming, I said, well, I can't make that interview.
They're looking for a hot school thing, get one.
Nope, they didn't.
And I thought, actually, I thought Gary Malinsky did a very good job, the, the little blurb that I saw on the news, I thought he did a very good job when he was interviewed, so.
That answers that question.
Yeah, so then there was another one, recently we've had a boiled water order for a few streets and, and why did that occur?
Because we had an open water main and we had to shut down the water main. And anytime you shut down and you have a loss of pressure, it's automatic, the health department, it's automatic.
The health department's been telling demands that we send the people notices on that area, the, the streets that are affected.
You have to put it in the press, you have to put it over Channel Five or Channel Three, whatever, you have to do all of the necessary things to notify people and then you have to have two complete days of water sampling, which was today, was the last day and Gary says by tomorrow that boil water should be lifted.
And it's precautionary more than.
That's right, yeah. Now, with that, Tracy, do you have any words of wisdom for the board tonight?
I don't.
Oh, thank you. Madam Treasurer.
Um, I believe you that the board has.
Um, I believe you that the board has copies of this, our son just wanted me to let you know that he put in a budget request through the town of Champlain for financing for the library and the civic center.
Thank you. Brian?
Hey, can you just tell us about the roof, I've been gone for like the last two and a half weeks. Here?
Yeah.
Apparently it's still, there's still some problem areas that they're working on.
Very small.
Yeah, they eliminated over half a problem area.
Okay.
We're still, I think there's four places that they're working on. Okay, 'cause I've been gone for like the last two and a half weeks, so.
So we got, we still are.
But it's something they'll be able to complete.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I think.
They came in and marked all the spots where.
They wait for a nice sunny day and then they block and they just touch it up.
Well, the rest of the street is supposed to be.
Yep. They still got their bucket here.
Great, very good.
And enough stuff left? Oh, plenty.
Yeah, we have a pound and a half left.
Yeah.
But we'll put that somewhere where it won't freeze and we can use that for. Touching up for.
Cellar.
I'll use it.
You know, ten years, that's a lot.
Okay, that's, that's it. Uh, I open the meeting to the public at this time, anybody who wishes to address the board, may do so. Nobody wishes to address the board, I will have a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
Sorry. Moved by trustee Pentfield, seconded by trustee Baker, all in favor?
Aye.
Almost set a record.
Seven thirty-one, my dear.
Almost set a record there.
And guess what, Carol is going to be checked. Oh.